Okay, okay. Are you still going through?
Hi.
We just, we'll get up there. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Don't just stay here.
This is what we're doing this week.
Then if I have a question.
You know, it's sort of great.
Okay.
I'm getting PRL and I'm off to the water. It's St. Jones. I'm just having a swish. Oh, really? That's what they said. No problem. Yeah. We'll be able to do it. I'm kind of a studio.
Thank you.
Uh, call this meeting to order. And I want to thank everybody. This is our first. We've got ten more of these sessions. We're going to try. And right now, it's probably going to be a lot trial and error until we get it all straightened out. What's the, how we're going to work this today is the council is going to take an item. We're going to discuss it. And when we're all done discussing it, then I'll ask from the audience if they have any input or questions on that particular item. And if they don't, then we go to item number two. And this is how we're going to go. So we don't need any interruption. We're bad enough to burn ourselves.
Speak for yourself.
And see what I mean?
All right. You might mention that I have an interest in the nation. Now, down the agenda that they have, because they have the complete information. And that we're deferring some of those to the regular meeting.
Thank you. There, on your agenda, you'll find a lot of different items. Where some of them are going to, uh, delete. We're going to have, uh, the Clayton, uh, council is going to come up here. We're going to have a, going to let us know on, what's the initial?
Service delivery.
Service delivery. Yeah, okay. And so that's going to take up some time. And then we have a meeting in Clayton. So, uh, we might not be through the whole there, but we'll be through the important items. So the first one we have on this is the repeal of rules and procedure on ordinance thirteen dash three. And I'm going to ask Chip to, uh, make some comments first to the council.
Would you read it first, though?
Do you want me to read this whole ordinance?
No.
Why just the thirteen dash three? The whole ordinance is that long?
Yeah. So we always think that I'll read the whole ordinance.
Did I get?
No, you.
I did.
I gave you one of these books.
You did.
Yes.
Uh, I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Do we need to do motions in an open floor meeting?
Well, that's what it's, they put down. And so.
We're learning as we go. There you go.
Okay. All a favor?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Chip.
Anyway, thirteen oh three was the ordinance which allows the mayor, of course, supports the mayor voting in section five and section six. We've all pretty much read through this. And, um, the rest of it just seems to be standard courtesy and rules that we already have in place. And it's very simple that if y'all have any comments, I think we've all talked about it.
Um.
Yeah, it's all kind of.
I invite Charlie, you have to adopt rules of procedure. So if you repeal this one, you have to replace it with another one.
Well.
You can amend it, if you want to amend it. But if you was appealing, you got to replace it with something else.
All right, well, let's just amend it then, because we need to go through and just pick out what we want to amend and rather than just replace the whole thing. We don't have any other rules of procedure already in place.
No, that's it.
All right, this is it. So we just mainly need to concentrate on section five and six.
Chip.
Yes.
We're on it. We have our legal counsel first to proceed.
Well, we may want to do that, and that's a good idea, too. Let's let him look at this. And maybe a good reason to put it off for another month.
I mean, I, you know, just from what I learned this weekend, I wouldn't make four, you know, allow it to go forward really this far.
Yeah.
Not until I get our lawyer to the table.
Well, I don't think timing is a real issue on this at all. So, I mean, as long as it gets done, we just want to.
That's right.
Make sure that it's done for the future.
Don't want to do it too fast and do it the wrong way.
I'd rather have his input.
Yeah.
You want to table this, that item, until we hire an attorney? And then check with him the legal procedures to do this and do it correctly?
I think it'd be smart.
All right. Who can do that?
The rest of you, you guys do, most of them. All right.
So.
So Linda can make a note for this to come on some future point when the attorney's available.
Okay. Scott Valley Fire Department contract of services.
I don't have anything on it.
Anybody have any questions?
Uh, the contract, what about the contract system? I mean.
It's same contract, isn't it?
Yeah, same contract. It's always been, we just stipulate getting paid in a timely manner.
That was the only changes to the original one that you.
To the original one? I'm sure there's been a little delay. I really couldn't comment on that this time.
Well, you brought that up on the timely manner thing. You said that what, you didn't get paid until the eighteenth of something of January for the last two quarters of seventeen?
It was in January of twenty eighteen. I don't recall the exact date.
But that was for the final two quarters of last year.
That's correct.
And then we're all ready to do for January this year. Is that correct?
Well, we say, uh.
Well, what was the delay?
Normally, they had invoiced us, so it was just an oversight. We didn't get an invoice. And it wasn't until I was doing the year end stuff that I noticed we got paid out everything on fire department. So then we sent them both over.
Can we fix that or? I mean, we pay them the same amount, so I don't know. Is there a need for an invoice?
I mean, just normally, they had to invoice this, so like I said, I can put it on the calendar and we can do it automatically, but that's just.
I don't want them to adjust their response time to our payment time.
Where, where? Has your contract been signed and sent to, to the city?
Yeah, you've got it in your.
Yes.
Where are we on the lease? That was the only, um, I had to ask about the lease. We sent y'all mid-year last year and I haven't gotten it back.
It's on the agenda for our next board meeting.
And do you, do you anticipate any changes to that?
Yes.
Financially?
No.
Okay, so financially, you don't anticipate that y'all would be asking anything of the city, so?
There was quite a bit of ambiguity within the lease, so things had to be well-written. So I think the city should have their city attorney look at it and proceed from there.
Well, I do remember one paragraph when I looked at it last year, it basically said we were swapping the use of this firehouse for the year services.
Yeah, so it overlaps with the contract that you're looking at right now.
Got you.
Does anybody get any questions they wanted to ask Paul about the fire department?
Yes. What changes are under consideration?
As far as, I don't understand the question. What changes?
I was listing as best I could. Apparently.
No, it's redone just every year on an annual basis.
So there's two different agreements. There's a funding agreement that we've always had. And then last year, it came up that we didn't have a lease with the fire department for their use of the building. And it came up with the trees, who was going to pay to take down the trees and that kind of thing. So we decided we needed a lease so that those questions didn't come up again. Um, and that's why I was asking, do we want to bring up the funding agreement until we have the lease? I would think that you would want to do both at the same time. Um, and maybe we can. I don't know when their next meeting is, but.
Well, I don't.
Regardless, we feel as important to give this agreement for services in place.
I would agree. I'm not sure if one has anything to do with the other.
Well, they could. If, if the lease, they said, y'all are going to pay this, that, and the other, when we don't, haven't normally done that. Because our budget for the fire department is, is one amount. So, you know, you understand what I'm saying. I mean, if there's no financial changes anticipated in the lease, then we may be fine to go ahead. But if there were financial changes to the lease as to who was going to pay for what, then I think, I would think the council would want to know that before.
No, I agree with what you're saying there. Only financial changes I can see that would have anything to do with the lease is who's going to take care of what.
Exactly.
Um, and I mean, right now, as far as I'm concerned, right now, we own the building. There is no lease. We're responsible for everything on that building.
And nothing changes with us taking care of the building one hundred percent. You know, it's, it's really just technical stuff, ambiguity. We, we drew some paragraphs out of there. That's what we agreed upon. To look at is the board. We've got one more review of it, and then we'll send it back to the city.
My question, uh, my next council meeting?
Let's see, no, our next board meeting's in April. So it'd be at the May council meeting.
It's going to be in the May.
So we was out of contract for fire services at the moment?
At the moment, yeah.
Oh, no, we need to deal with that.
Yeah, that's why it's on the agenda for the next.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. No, I don't think, I, I appreciate what Linda's bringing up, but at the same time, we need, we can't wait till May to have fire services.
Right, yeah. And we had that exact discussion once in a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I thought I'd heard Mr. Durpo ask Mr. Wheeler if there were likely to be any changes. And I thought that I'd heard Mr. Wheeler say yes. And that was where my questions coming from. Did I miss here?
No. You want me to elaborate on that? Like I say, the one change that I know about that has to be in there, because I recommended it when I read it last year at the council meeting, was if I was on the other side of the table, there's no way I would sign it. Because there was one paragraph in it that basically indicated that we were trading them the use of our firehouse for their services, not giving them one miller's rate, one miller's point. You follow me? So in other words, you can't, if somebody could bring up a contract and say, well, hey, we're trading you the building for your services, we, you know, that's one thing I know y'all are going to change. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And is there anything else that you're aware of that you can speak of from that point?
It's too much to get into the minutia of it right now before we have the final draft ready to present you guys of what we do, have a work session like this and go through all of it.
Right.
If that's good with y'all, then we'll have the city attorney at the table.
Well, I think that would be smart. And do that and just have your representatives there as well.
Absolutely.
You can wear two hats.
There you go.
Thank you. Yes?
Um, does everyone here know that Paul Wheeler is on the board at Skelley Mountain? Okay, because that, that to me is like, you're in full knowledge of the, the work. Okay, sorry.
Probably.
You have two other people that are on your same board representing Sky Valley.
Right. David Spears, he's chairman of the board, and Carl Lynn, he's secretary. And anybody's welcome to call us anytime. Our budgets, public knowledge, all followed the city. Put that in every year.
Sure.
We don't know, we're, we're the same amount we're always requesting. We just simply put in there, just go ahead and let it notice it to be this amount four times a year, and we'd like to have it by this day for the first quarter. We put February twenty eighth, so on and so on, for the next three quarters of the year.
Yes?
So am I understanding that we know, we currently, that we do not have a contract for the fire department? Is that correct? That's correct. So if we don't have a current contract for the fire department, are we receiving services as we speak from the fire department into today's world?
Yes.
So how does that happen? What liability is there if we don't have a contract?
The, the fire department is located in two different states and operates in Raven County and the city of Sky Valley. So they're, they're covered. If you want to come in and see them details in the insurance policy or whatever, you're welcome to come to the firehouse and do that. I'd commit to there anytime.
What you're saying is the liabilities, the fire department are covered whether you're in contract or out.
Yeah.
And we'll be, and we'll be in contract next Tuesday.
Yeah. I mean, if something happens in the city council and this doesn't get signed for the next year, you guys are going to be protected. That none of those people will leave you hanging. It's all tied into the Raven County and Baguette County nine-one-one systems. So the people are getting the calls.
Can we be in contract next Tuesday if they're not meeting until April to determine what they're going to propose for a contract?
We won't be in contract as far as the lease. If y'all decide you want to, to do the funding agreement, then you can get out.
What were you ever talking about? I think you were talking about two different things, the lease and.
Right, there are actually different things at stake.
In other words, we signed this fire services contract. We're nowhere, no, we're no different than we have been for how many years?
There's never been a lease.
And so the lease is something that still needs to be addressed, and obviously will be in May. But we're, I don't think it's smart to hold up fire services or the agreement.
There's never been a lease, right?
No.
Okay.
That's what came up with the problem with the trees last year.
I didn't know if everybody out there understood, because I remember that.
So we're just on the, right now, we're in the first draft of that lease that's never been there before. So, I mean, we would expect the city to look at it and make some provisions and send it back to us. I mean, it's.
Ongoing negotiations?
Yeah.
Am I correct in, in that the contract for services as far as our, you know, services, that contract has been signed by both parties? Is it not?
No, it's on the agenda for the next council meeting. It'd be voted on by the council and signed by.
Well, what did we receive by certified mayor?
Our, our signed copy. So he signed it. Now, you guys sign it, then it'll be a contract.
Okay.
Somebody got.
And that's just, that's what the council meeting.
Yeah, at our board meeting, we approved it and signed it. And now we're sending it over to the city, so you guys can approve it and sign it. Okay? It's for one mill, which was approved in the budget back in.
One more question back there.
I just, I just had a suggestion that if you're concerned about the lease when it's finalized, like type of it, why don't you just extend that services contract for three months until you can tie it all together in May?
Now, because it, it, it's for one year of funding, and to do that with everything that's going on with the service delivery strategy of the county, it's. Yeah, not a, not a real feasible idea to do that, Ralph. But I appreciate the question.
I have a question. Do y'all want any of us to turn around and look at you when we talk so you can hear what we're saying? A number of people are saying that stuff. Y'all have to spin around in your chairs, sorry.
Yeah, it will. It will.
Just wiggle, turn around, so that everybody can hear. Because your voices are going that way, mine's going that way, so I'm going to have it this
Linda, do you see a problem with signing the agreement for the services with the additional caveat, I guess, if, if payments have to be made at a certain time? And then reexamining or looking at the lease after they come up at the board meeting? Just to get that out of, or is it better that we just wait until it's all put together? If we don't have a problem with services, so that we've got fire protection, then just wait until it's all a one package as opposed to coming up in two?
I mean, in a perfect world, you would like to do them at the same time because of any, you know, things that might come up in the lease that would be financial considerations.
Right, which would be having a city attorney, which has got to be discussed, review the lease agreement along with the financial package for services.
I mean, we sent the lease over, what, I mean, summer of last year, so I'm not sure, you know, I'm sure, I'm not sure why we don't have one yet. I haven't heard, but, um.
It wasn't sent over that soon, and when you see how much we had to change, you'll understand, and we didn't want to put too much on the table.
I know, just, I'm the one that brought it up in the council meeting in the summer of last year. Now, when the fire department got it, I don't know. So that's another thing. The last administration had an opportunity to take the bullbun and horns on this and get done with it and different. So, um, you know, we're where we are. So it is what it is. Yes?
Uh, if there were no changes in the contract other than the timely payment that's due, which by the way, I think the city should invoice the fire department, uh, why not extend the contract? Wouldn't that be simpler than doing all this and then wait for the lease to come in when it ever comes in?
Well, we can't extend the, the current contract because the funding is not the same as it was last year. I mean, it's a different amount, but, um.
It's based on the same criteria, though, which is.
We, you know, we could do, I mean, if y'all are not comfortable doing the full year agreement, we could agree to an amount for the first and second quarter and then, you know, do it again. But, I mean, if it's going to be that late in the year before we get the lease, or we can go forward, whatever you all are comfortable with.
I, I don't see what the problem is in the fact that they're two separate documents.
The, the only potential problem would be is if we have a financial obligation that they're asking us for in the lease.
Right.
That's the only thing that.
I can guarantee you, we're not asking you for a financial obligation in the lease.
I mean, like insurance, I know y'all currently pay for the insurance on the building and all those.
Utilities.
Utilities. Who's going to maintain the building? Who, you know, if it needs a new roof, who's going to, I mean, those are all things that could affect our budget that without seeing the lease and what changes you all are proposing, it's hard for me to know, um, you know, how to advise.
Let me ask you this one.
I, I've got the lease and all the changes that are making on it right now. If y'all want to get into the minutia of all this, it'll take about an hour, right here. I've got it. If y'all want to go do it. If everybody will pull that out, put the city, some of the fire department, we'll go right through it. Will everybody pull out the copies of that?
Well, that's not on the agenda, so we don't have that.
Well, obviously, there's so much time to talk about.
Well, that's the point, dude. I think y'all like the fact that if they have a fire station, they have equipment on city property. That's great. All we have to do, if we don't want that, we can, if there's a problem with the lease, we can say, hey, we're not signing this lease, and y'all can take the trucks and go home.
Yeah, tip us out.
So there you go. I mean, that, you know, it's, this is not that big of a thing.
But before you do that, you might want to see what it does to your property insurance.
Exactly.
Potentially. The, the city pays the fire department less than fifty-nine thousand dollars a year for fire department services, personal fire services, assistance with automobile wrecks. Pretty good deal. Police department costs what? Half a million?
Well, no, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Well, just, so.
I want more quick comment.
Yeah.
Definitely, keep them separate. Should be a triple net lease, meaning that you're going to be responsible for everything, which you've already said, when we have like a handshake, aren't we that kind of a community?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then let's move on. Okay.
That's about what I was going to just suggest. Move on, we're.
Okay.
Get into that as a separate.
Like I say, I've got a copy, but it's just a rough copy.
No, we don't need to go through that. But I'm. We'll wait for your copy to come down. We're just, just got that. Now, we do have the tree ordinance.
My feeling on the tree ordinance is it needs to be passed. If you don't like a tree ordinance at all, do something about it later. Because if we don't pass this tree ordinance now, we are going to be stuck with the old one. Here.
And what was wrong with the older?
Uh, a lot of things. A lot of things. I can't be too specific about it, but the new ordinance tells us a little more in detail. But Helen, you're, and Dan, y'all were on the tree ordinance. Can you explain to everybody what it is that is so different?
Well, basically, it clarified a lot of things that were very ambiguous in the previous ordinance. And if you listened to the people for the last two years, those that were opposed to doing something were opposed on the basis that they wanted to maintain the view on their property.
That's right.
The new ordinance does that far better than the existing ordinance. Yet it still protects the mountains from erosion and so forth in the event somebody does decide to clear cut. They've still got to replace something to, you know, protect the erosion. So it's, it's a far better ordinance in the existing way.
And if it doesn't pass, we're stuck with the old one. Kevin? I'm sorry. You're supposed to say, Gabby.
I don't know if he could see me. The reason that the two-year process was begun was at the request of your city inspector. This was not a willy-nilly, let's go rewrite an ordinance. They requested. He requested.
Have you asked him that question directly?
He has stated that, that directly in meetings.
In meetings.
That there, the previous, which is still the current ordinance, is too vague. He does not have the guidance that he requests to interpret it accurately. Am I misstating anything or overstating anything?
Just, you're stating Bob Power stated that in the meeting.
Yes, yes. In a public meeting.
In a public meeting. What's the two years?
Different conversation we all have.
Two years.
Mr. Mayor, that's an answer.
Uh, may, may I speak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to say that this, many of you, I don't know if Mr. Mayor, some council members have attended these sessions, planning meetings, uh, community attendance. Ideas were given from community members. We want to protect Sky Valley. We learned the difference in crowning a tree and topping a tree. And if you don't like trees, you shouldn't be living here in Sky Valley. But, you know, but the whole idea is to protect our community, our views, but you can still do it. Someday, the old, the old, the way it's written now will be litigated. And litigation costs money. Somebody's going to, and all this does, it expands the definitions. And you have two years of meetings, I don't know how many, Linda, of planning session meetings with people attending with their input. I don't see why this shouldn't be passed. And, yeah, we want to protect our community as much as anybody else. Thank you.
Yeah. I would just like to kind of, kind of offer the other, the flip side of that. I and Al have done extensive research, kind of backtracking from where we came in. And, um, there is by the Urban Forestry Commission, a guidebook for tree ordinance forming. And it is twenty-six pages long, written by an authority, a forester in Georgia. And it states that the process is long and arduous, that patience is of utmost concern. It may take months or most likely years. It starts, it starts with community input. I know that we came in maybe in the middle of that, so I'm excusing that part of it. But the community is a huge part. The second thing that we investigated was that the Mountain District Protection Act of Georgia covers us whether we have a tree ordinance or not. And that states very clearly that it is for commercial development or for the community. In other words, the right of way, what do we want as a community to be done with trees on the right of way? What do we want as far as, you know, city property, of which we have none? So, we are kind of in a unique situation. None of the information that we looked at dictates what a private property, single-family dwelling area is to do. From my standpoint, and I hope I'm not speaking out of mind with Al, we believe that the property owners of Sky Valley are very conscientious. They want exactly what you're saying, that we want our land to be beautiful. But we love trees, we just want to have what we want to have on our property. No one tells us what color to paint our house. Why do they have to tell us what trees to cut down or not cut down? So, sorry to get away from that, but we also went to Highlands, North Carolina, which in our minds was a comparable city, even though there's nothing comparable because we're so tiny. They, we spoke directly to the mayor, we spoke directly to the city clerk. Both of them confirmed they don't have a tree ordinance for private property owners. And the mayor, in fact, looked at us, looked at us like, what are you talking about? And he said, I'm a tree hugger. I like trees on my property. My neighbors don't. They cut them down. They respect me, I respect them. Sure, we have a couple of problems. But what I'm saying to address Connie is I think we need to look at it from the process has only just begun. And I would like more community input and more, you know, I certainly appreciate the work that has been done. That is not a question. But we need to listen to the people and say, how many of you guys want somebody telling you what to do on your property, and you're okay with it? Because that's, you know, a lot of people to take into consideration.
Hi.
Yeah.
This is probably the most emotional thing we've ever dealt with in Sky Valley. It's like waving red flags at people, and I'm not denigrating the hard work that's been done. However, I had a personal experience, and I won't go into it. I met every criteria and really got abused. I'm still here and I'm surviving. But I think the issue that angers people is the idea that we are being dictated to about our property. And I know you've done hard work. I don't, but the thing that I found when I cut trees was trees that looked good, when we cut them down. I spent seventy-five hundred dollars and took down some trees that would have fallen on my house and my neighbor's house. And yes, I did have every paperwork, including my neighbor's. And if I hadn't done it, they would land at end. And since then, I've had trees fall down by themselves, and I've paid to have them cut up and cleared. Okay. But I think as we go forward, the attitude that this is a dictatorial process really upsets people, and I understand the preservation. I would suggest that trees are really not an endangered species in Sky Valley. And when you take some of these big trees down, you find out that they are hollow inside because the rodents have cleaned them out. And in writing any ordinance, you need to know that the private property rights of people. In the past, the people who have clear cut have been the people who built a spec house or people who, who built property to be, to be resold. And I have pictures of what has happened in the past because I was not allowed to do what somebody sitting right up there did. And I went up and took pictures, and that stopped that right in its tracks. And I'm, I can be pretty cranky when I get my drawers in a while, but I really want to see people's private property rights respected, and that's where I'm coming from. Okay, and Mr. Mayor, can I respond? The issue here, Maureen, from the way I see it, and somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong. We have a tree ordinance that we need to do something with it. That is the issue. And if we don't do something like pass it, then we're stuck with the old ordinance. If people do not want an ordinance, then that's a whole nother ball of worms or whatever. And then you just vote to have no tree ordinance. But right now, the issue is, we've got a tree ordinance. I'm sorry.
Our.
Yes, I want you to know we came here in two thousand, and guess what they were discussing?
Tree ordinance.
A tree ordinance. They were, they were mad. You remember, Paul? And they clear cut up a hanging tree, and it's a sore spot to this day. There is no reason that this community can't be logical and have a compromise. There is no reason you have to be so rigid that you say, cut the trees, don't cut the trees. It has been eighteen years. If the committee has done a good job, pass the ordinance. If you don't like it, come back and make an amendment. It isn't going to create peace in the Middle East if we don't have a tree ordinance. We, we have been talking about it for thirty years. Now, I've been here for thirty years. Every new administration, the first thing they bring up, that's gray ordinance. And glory to God with that, Maureen.
All right, thank you very much. I think we have one, we've spent enough time on that for you. Al, and thank you. The water storage tank inspection, that is, Linda, let's say.
We've recently had our sanitary survey with EPD, and they suggested that we, they wrote us out and said that we needed to have them on a regular scheduled maintenance. The first people that we dealt with, the EPD said every three years. Then we have another person that came up and did the one on Wynden Ridge, and she said it doesn't have to be three years, it just has to be on a regular basis. So, it could be thirty-five years, you know, is the recommended, but, but anyway, so these.
How long has it been since our last inspection?
I think the last one was about five years ago. So, the, I know we're not voting on them today, but the ones that I've got, we've worked with liquid engineering before, they've done some workforce before. I also sent you by email a one-year agreement. I know it came up about the three years, it's not one tied to three years, but. I did ask them to because they are the, one of the three that does the cleaning as a part of the contract. And I said, well, you know, how much is it to do just the cleaning if the inspection has already been done? And they said, it's saving you about three hundred dollars because it's basically the same setup, so. So, anyway, that's, y'all have any questions about those? Need any, or more information before we put that on the agenda?
Well, I have one question. I didn't get to receive that single. I have the two, you know, the multiple-year contract, but I didn't get, what was the number for that one?
The one-year was four thousand nine ninety-five.
And the two-year, fifty-four hundred?
The two, the two-year was fifty-four fifteen per year.
Right, they, they asked for a two-year contract, though.
With a two-year.
Which is total.
Was it one thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for the two-year contract?
But they're also the ones that do the cleaning as part of it, as opposed to the other two who come in and do the inspection, and if it's determined it needs to be cleaned, then there's an additional charge that goes with it, if I understand that correctly.
Well, on the one-year too, I know you're saying that's cheaper, and you're right. And, but the only caveat is that they gave us a four hundred and twenty dollar discount if the work's completed this winter. So, if we don't do it this winter, then it's fifty-four fifteen, which is the same as.
Did you say we were cited for not having it done? Did I hear your first?
No, we're not cited, but that is one of their, in their written report, that was written up.
And who's written your report?
Georgia EPD.
Oh. Well, these people, liquid engineering seems to be the one that's the most professional. They've certainly outlined everything in here. And the other two are just simple bids, one-page bids.
And those are just for inspection, they do not do cleaning, if it needs cleaning.
So, they gave us a four hundred dollar discount if we proceed right away and have it done before. You said this winter. Is there a date that has to be completed?
I don't think there was a date in it. It just said in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, winter season.
They're y'all are much like cold water.
Well, and that's the best time for us to do it too, because there's less demand on the system, so it doesn't hurt us if they, you know, they have to.
Now, did you say liquid engineering is the one that offered the four hundred, or was it, okay.
And there are also people that did it before.
Yes, and they do a whole, they videotape it, they do a whole comprehensive report on each thing, and they do a very good job.
They did a good job, I remember. That's my, I definitely think we ought to proceed on the.
Not doing that.
I know, I said.
It's the recommendation.
Recommend that you keep it on the agenda for.
On the first page.
The twenty-seventh.
It's time.
Move ahead. Any other discussion?
Yep, Chip's, Chip's.
On the first page of their agreement. Make sure I'm, yeah, it is the first page. The second paragraph from the bottom says, "For normal cleaning operations, clients shall make available an approved discharge location, sewer, cofferdam, et cetera, with three hundred feet of reservoir access hatch." What's all this about? What's this going to cost us and what do? Now, assuming we have to retain what they take out.
They just do it there. It's, I mean, you're just talking about a little bit of dirt.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It doesn't sound like a big issue. Man, it's not like we're taking hazardous waste out. If we is, we all re-tranking it, so. But they just talks like, you know, we've got to build this discharge reservoir and so forth.
Imagine that form is something we'd give to Clayton, to give to Gainesville, be the same type of form.
Yeah, they just do it, right?
Yeah. And they're, they're the ones that have done it before.
Because under the assumptions here, that, you know, it is that they, you know, this bid is based on two inches or less in the bottom, just so y'all know that. Okay, yeah.
Any questions from?
Just a point of clarification. The winter ends March twenty. If they go by the calendar, just so you know what your dates are.
You got next, we put on the shorts after that day.
No, but the calendar says it's officially spring, March twenty.
What's your folks say?
Oh, groundhog. I don't know what he is.
Is it six more weeks?
Yeah, but the wolf.
We're moving along here with the snow and ice control plan, Linda.
This is basically our first attempt of having a snow and ice control plan. Basically, the guys have what they normally do to try to make sure the primary roads are cleared first and then move out to the secondary roads. It changes depending on the situation. If it's a, it's gonna be a small snow, it starts raining, we can't do the brine. If it comes in a snow, then we try to do the brine ahead of time. So, depending on the conditions and what they forecast is what we base what we do. But we put together a plan just to have some kind of standardization as to, you know, what we will try to do and when, and what our current resources are as far as equipment. This will be probably one of those documents that change as we acquire, you know, different equipment or different personnel, but. I know you all had it a while. I don't know if you have any questions or suggestions as to.
This plan is on the website, correct?
It is on the website, or is it just because this is a draft? Because I.
It's a little bit of this material.
I was gonna say, it was in this agenda material. But, I mean, if it's adopted by the council, it would go, you know, permanently on our.
Well, I thought this was just a work in progress. I mean, y'all was in, y'all started with this when we talked about it. You added to it, because I did not go back and reread it. I thought it was exactly the one we looked at.
It pretty much is, other than, you know, changing a word here or there, but, you know, it's pretty much the same. They looked at some changes to the map. We thought about doing a light snow versus a heavy snow scenario, and that kind of overcomplicated the plan a little bit. I think it's probably better just to say that as conditions change, the plan may change. I mean, if we have a truck that gets stuck or broke down, it's going to change how we have to, you know, address what we're doing, but the basis of it is we're going to keep our primary roads to the best of our ability. You know, if we get in way over our head, we're going to bring in additional resources to do that.
You know, my biggest concern's been about public safety when we got all this snow on the road and you can't even get within a mile of some people's house, you know.
Or heights.
Yeah, exactly. We need to get changed for the truck.
Good.
But as far as the plan, I think we should have it on. Our meeting agenda for the twenty-seventh, too. And then if we need changes along, we'd have it posted on the website. So, our citizens know that we have a plan and that we, change it as necessary. I believe that's why you put together a plan.
Now, adopting it in what capacity? Just what capacity are we adopting this in, in a policy procedure for the city?
Basically.
Not an ordinance.
Right.
No.
No, so in other words, it can remain a continued work in progress as we learn.
Learn more.
Learn more and more.
Okay. Like I said, I mean, it would definitely change if we got different equipment. You know, we've talked about, you know, the small utility-type vehicle with a plow. And, yeah, we talked about a whole bunch of different scenarios, and right now, we don't have those, so can't write them into a plan because they don't exist yet. But at some future point, if we, you know, hit additional resources, then that's going to obviously change, you know, how we tackle some of these.
But at least it says what our plan is and our capability is.
Right, our current.
And I think that should be, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but to Chip's point, the city council is the legislative body of Sky Valley, as I understand it. And, and what we're involved in is voting on ordinances and resolutions. This is neither. This is basically, as I see it, a internal standard operating procedure for a particular problem. So, what, again, to his point, what are we voting on?
But you don't have to.
You don't have to.
Right. So, it doesn't need to be an agenda item.
And if you don't.
Unless, unless the people that are in the community here, you know, have a different thought about it. Jim has hand up first and then Skip.
Okay, two things. First of all, I think the council's supervision over what the city policies are is probably the best way that the standards of the residents of Sky Valley can get communicated to folks and actually do the work. So, I think, I think you guys have a key role in helping, you know. Define what our real interests are and where we'd like to have some improvements and so, things like that. Secondly, I just would like to point out that, and I don't know if it's in this or not, but I think there's a potential dangerous situation whereby on occasion the, these, the, not the sewers, but the drainage ditches along the road overflow onto Ridge Pole and also onto Alpine. And it's only, I've only noticed this in the last two years, but it's. And it's only, I've only noticed this in the last two years, but it's, it's a, it's a real ice danger if there's ice running across, the water running across the road that can freeze and create the black ice that you can't even see coming. So I would, I would suggest that we could put into the plan, you know, some strategic ditch maintenance that would prevent this.
That in itself would be through the maintenance of the ditches in the fall and so forth. Due to some of the equipment failures, we didn't get around to them, they're working on the ditches now to get that out. It's still winter and your problem could still happen, but it, the, that is a, on a list of superintendent that the gutters and are to be taken care of and so. That it, it isn't that we're ignoring that problem, it's just that we haven't got all over the city to take it, to take care of the problem.
Well, to, to your point, Em, I like that because what he's saying is that let's look at certain ditches. I think what you're talking about right above Valley View, that was one of them. It stayed frozen forever crossing the road. I think what he's saying is, well, we've got certain ditches in the wintertime, we need to put a little extra priority, priority based on that. That's, I think that's smart to put into the snow thing.
That in itself would be something that, that you could really notify or have to call the city and tell them, we'll make, have it a list that we added to so that as you see different problems in the ditches and so forth as you go around, call us. Let us know, we'll put it down and then we'll put it, give it to James and we'll see about taking care of that situation. But the, the other thing on that would be, Linda is the administrator of the city, as the city manager. And I don't believe that I've ever heard that Linda doesn't take people's phone calls. So if there's an issue, it can go, it doesn't need, it can go to a council member to go to Linda, but Linda's the one that has to determine whether it's acted on or not. But then to address it further, it might be a good idea that when the monthly newsletter comes out, that these items that were brought up are addressed, that they've been taken care of. So that the people know that there's been an item that came up and it's been taken care of. And that's by way of communication, so you make a complaint about something, whether you call me or you call Linda, it's addressed, it's dealt with adequately or not, but it's dealt with. And then the people at some point in Sky Valley know that there was an issue that was brought up and it was taken care of. And I think that's one of the things with, with a lot of things, it's just communication. And again, I don't think Linda's ever said, "I don't wanna talk to anybody." So. She may say it under her breath. But that might be a, a way for people to look at, she's the city administrator, she is responsible for the day-to-day operations and it's not a council member going around her end to talk to somebody about doing something. It's not your job to talk to James if you see him to do something. It's to go through Linda in the first instance, or if you feel comfortable talking to Bob or to Neil or whoever. And then it still has to eventually go to Linda and it's just a follow-up out of it. Skip, you had your hand up before?
Well, I guess the question is, if it's not voted on and it's not public, how is it going to be publicized to the citizens of Sky Valley? If it's just a city operating procedure for public works here? Is it gonna be put on the website?
Well, that's what I would suggest because if it's not something that we legally can do an ordinance or a resolution, we can say, yeah, we think it's a good idea as the council, but we're saying that now. So if, if Linda does put it out there, again, it's communication, we have the way to do that, you can put it out on the website. You can put it out as the email blast to everybody that there has been concern about snow removal. And we've looked at it and we've come up with these ideas and we've written them into a standard operating procedure at this point and let people know what we've come up with. Again, the, the input from everybody is still available, it's, goes through Linda. Your idea may not be as good as Jim's, it may not be as good as Al's, maybe, you know, but you've got something and people are aware that you have something and, you know.
There's more on the website, the disordinances and minutes and things like that. I, my suggestion was, and just a suggestion, that we, that's right, we don't have to vote on it, we do it. In a workstation like this, that's why it's good, we can talk about things like that that are of concern to our citizens. And one of this is one thing that's been a concern, especially during this winter. And they have a plan, developed a plan, I just saw it to be a good idea to put it on there and it's a work in progress because of changing things that we learned. And then, and our citizens and visitors even can look at our website and say, oh, they got a plan and feel a little comfortable maybe. And the other thing is that this, that you citizens, if there's black ice or if there's a problem with a tree across the road or something else, we hope, you know, the first thing you do is call City Hall. Then, you know, the police can go out and close the street if it's that bad until it's cleaned up or cared for or done something and, and communication can go out, there's lots of things to be done to the public, how you get around that area, watch out for this. And, and communication is the basis of how we operate best.
And if there is, you need to make a call, make the non-emergency number, call them.
Non-emergency, yeah.
Yeah, it's not emergency, it, call that number and it does get taken care of, right, Linda?
Yeah, and if you cross any college generates, I'll generate a work order which then goes to an appropriate department. And then they sign off when they've done it and they give it back to me and, you know.
Question, going back to what Jim was talking about and Al addressed also, the, the ditches being clogged up on Ridge Pole. Is there any responsibility or expectation for any of the city employees that are out on the roads on a periodic basis to be proactive? I know that situation up there, I was going and coming a lot, y'all know I've been in and out of town an awful lot. And I didn't stop and grab a phone and call, but truthfully, those leaves were clogged up there, water was coming across. That existed for weeks.
Yes.
And I don't understand why, I mean, I totally agree with the citizen input and so forth, but it seems like to me, it's not that big of a deal. If our police are going by there, the guys on the garbage trucks or whatever, but, I mean, it's as plain as the nose on your face. It's a dangerous situation, not let it go that long to do something about it. Bob has talked about that very thing, I believe, if I'm speaking correctly, with James in particular, about proactive. If you're here and you're going to this spot to do something and you see something in the, in the middle, stop and take care of it or finish what you're doing and then come back and take care of it or make note of it that it needs to be taken care of. Now, I've been here a short time, so I don't know for sure, but it appears that that's not being done based on what you're saying just on Ridge Pole. So I haven't had a chance to talk with the place chief yet because his health is kinda poor right now. That would be the same thing that I would talk to him about. Your guys need to be proactive, you know, you're out traveling X number of miles every shift and if you can't see that there's a problem, then maybe that's the problem, that you can't see things. And if you see things and don't act on it, then that's a problem, that's an easily corrected problem that we can address. And then to throw it back would be, it's, if you live here, it's your problem, that's my opinion. If you live here, it's also your problem. And if you see something, it may be, it just happened and nobody else had the chance to see it yet. So that's the phone call, go to Linda and try and get something done. Then you can be upset if two weeks later it's still there and nobody's done anything, but that's, that's a different animal. So I think you gotta look at, all right, again, we're coming down to communication. All right, your situation, you've got a lot on your plate that you need to take care of. But not everybody is in that situation, it's also because you look like, do I wanna be the squeaky wheel? And I think that if you're paying taxes here and you expect certain things or you see a dangerous situation, you should be the squeaky wheel. And, or take care of it yourself, if it's something that's small enough, it's, you know, if there's a limb down on the road that's not, you know, 38 inches wide, stop and pull it off. You know, it's, it's easy enough to do, that's just my opinion. But anyway, it's, it's a question of talking about things, all right, what's, what's the problem? You see a problem, I don't see the problem, Helen sees a problem that's the same as yours. Well, maybe I gotta rethink my position and say, okay, we've gotta look at this differently. But I think, as I can get into it more, Linda, as the city manager, is responsible for the day-to-day activities here. And that's where the buck stops. And she's got a different opinion.
No, you're exactly right, can I, can I just respond to something? We do have a system in place where the police communicate with public works. It can be, especially night shift will ride up, you know, if there's lights out, you know, different places that need to be in place. Things that they, day shift would not see, or, you know, and they do notify them if there's a tree down or a branch that they can't get out of. So there is communication between those two departments. I've talked to all of the, all of our workers about riding around with their blinders on and, and James will tell you, we have this conversation about, I think sometimes they're out and about so much that they see things that they kinda tone them out and we all do that. I mean, you know, when you, like, when I ride through the city, I see a lot of things that they may not see because they're out there every day, that kinda thing. So if I go out in the city, I probably make a big list, if they're around in the city, they probably make a little list. So, so that's an ongoing thing, but you're right, you know, and I, you know, on my case, I've gotta get out more and, and, you know, double check everything they're doing too. I don't wanna micromanage them, I know James does a great job of overseeing what they're doing, but, you know, the buck does suck with me too, so, you know, I'll get out.
Well, I think we've been on this subject, we've gotta move along here if we have a group coming in. The video retention schedule, city council meetings?
That's part of your procedures ordinance, so if that's something that we wanna change again. My question was, I know we talked about, or I think Neil had sent out an email saying that he would support the two years. Right now, we're uploading it to YouTube and we only keep the actual footage on our little disc for the three months that we put in the ordinance. So I don't think you really wanna keep the disc necessarily for two years. I wouldn't, I don't know if there's a reason to do that as long as the video is still out there. And do we, do we wanna delete it off of YouTube after two years or do we just wanna leave it indefinitely? So I haven't deleted anything off of YouTube, so.
That's just a discussion we need to.
Yeah, that's.
That's all we should, we need to have as well.
My recommendation was to keep it into a digital box like Dropbox or something like that so she doesn't have to keep the little things, I like storing digital files offsite in case the building burns or whatever, you don't lose your files. But understand, Linda, that we do have an issue at the city hall with.
Upload speed.
Upload speed, well, download speed and upload speed, I understand we have really slow internet over there. I've asked Linda, questioned her after some council meetings about why the video wasn't up. She said, "Well, it started yesterday, it still goes." Did you find out, are you able to get anything with True Vista?
They never responded, I called, left messages and I have not responded. I have actually talked with Windstream about getting a faster speed on our service and we have that. So if that's something y'all wanna consider, we can talk to you about that.
It's quite a bit more.
Yeah, it's quite a bit more.
Well, yeah, I think y'all were talking about a dedicated line, more like a T1.
No, this was, I asked about a T1 and the one that they're doing is like 10 times faster than a T1.
Oh, okay, but yeah, you say expensive, but, you know, I don't know, I just, we just got cable on up my end of Alice Mountain, thank goodness, and I traded over to True Vista and I got internet now. Instead of like y'all, I felt like I was pedaling a bicycle half the time. Okay, but I'd see if we can find a True Vista guy and see. I don't know where the line, where do the lines come up that feed them, feed these, I know it comes up Ball Mountain, I think. Isn't that where they put, when they ran the fiber optic cable to the tower?
I asked them when they were doing the fiber if we could get it then and at that time they told me no. So I don't know if anything would have changed, but, you know, that's why she called, we'll try, we'll just have to keep trying.
My experience with them, they kept telling me no too, till I finally aggravated enough and said, hey, send me a technician up here. And he goes, "Sure, you're right, it's just across the street." Okay, and it was installed several months later, but we got it done. Anyway, I know that's one of your big issues, so, but keeping files digitally, I think off, off-premise is the safest way to do it.
But when, when you, when you do finally get it uploaded to YouTube, I mean, you could still save it from there, right? So, I mean, technically it is being.
Well, that's what I've been doing because I thought, you know, the way it was brought up last year was everyone keep it 90 days and try to get rid of it.
That takes me almost 90 days to get it up.
So I've been downloading them myself, so I have them as well, but anyway, okay.
What would the cost to benefit, sounds like it's not gonna be a good one.
No, right now they were telling us it was, I think, almost $500 to upgrade for a month.
How much?
$500.
So that's, that's, so to me, that's a mad starter.
But we do need to figure some way to get them some internet if we can, that's reasonably priced.
I literally will start the video, I can't do it during the day because the Fox, our whole system's down, we can't even work. So I'll start it in the evening and it goes and it's still not done till about midday the next day. So I usually now am doing it at home because midday the next day, we've just lost a half a day of work at City Hall. So I'm trying to do it at home and my home internet is just as bound, so, but there needs to be some kind of.
They got some issue there.
I'm not familiar with that, is that something you can wait, say, a meeting on Tuesday and to do it on Friday night?
Yeah, I was just trying to get it up as quickly as possible.
Well, if, if it's a question of, if it slows the day-to-day operations of administering to the city down and it's not imperative because you've got a, the minutes that come out and this is just extra and it doesn't really need to be done Tuesday night or Wednesday or Thursday. Unless somebody's got a different thought on it.
I think people are waiting on the video.
Well, that depends on if you're waiting on the video.
They don't wanna wait a week, you know, I don't know how many.
But if it slows them down during the course of the next day, you know, how important is it as opposed to running the business?
Well, we don't need to spend a ton of money on internet, but they just need some overall help with that, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I don't understand, I don't understand the technical part of it, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's see if what we can find out from True Vista and then.
True Vista double check problem, we got several options, we just got 100 down, can't figure it out here.
Well, that's what I'm getting, cause I got 100 beds up there now, that needs to be wronged.
All right.
Moving along.
Moving along, contracting with our auditor.
Is this the same one we used before?
It's the one we used last year.
Was the first year?
What's the first year?
Well, it was her first year. That was one more question, I didn't know. And she gave us a bid for three years, that she wants to do that.
This is my multi-year. This is a multi-year?
No, but in her thing last year, she gave us a price good for three years.
Good.
So that letter of engagement is just for this year with the price that she quoted last.
That's what I, yeah.
What do they charge?
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five?
Hundred.
Eighty-five hundred, I call it.
So, anyway, there's several points in here, but I'd like to go back to a point in sixteen in Athens, and the very final page is financial state findings. And, uh.
Basically, you wanna break up this, sir?
I think, uh, it's not, it's the very last, I gave, oh, Connie, I got one for you. I gave everybody a handout up here that somewhere I got one for you.
Oh. Before you get going, long-winded, uh.
We got people coming in the door.
Yeah, I think they are.
Okay, just, you can get it to me when you're fine.
Prompting through. Okay, yeah. Cause you know I can get along with them, I. I go through the financial thing.
We can charge.
Yeah, I see that too.
So we're going to go ahead with this auditor?
It'll be on the end.
It'll be on next Tuesday, but anyway, what I just, just real quick, what I gave y'all was a copy of the two thousand sixteen audit. Um, I've gone through it in a cursory view, and just for the fact that we're gonna get this other audit, we know how important this particular seventeen audit is. I just gave this to y'all to maybe get familiar with it, so when we do get the results, we know. We're not learning at that point how to read the thing and understand it, you know?
You aren't going to check on it?
Well, hell, y'all are here.
Oh, really?
I understand that anyway.
Where are?
All right, um, we have some, uh, what's that on?
Hello, Mike, consulting staff. You know, this Debbie.
Hey, Debbie.
She's a council member from Clayton. And Raymond, he's the attorney with SDS Consulting.
Are they?
I don't know if everybody here understands anything. I get, probably ought to give them a little bit of idea what this SDS thing is. You're all familiar with.
Let's adjourn this whole thing. Uh, I like to, uh, we're gonna adjourn this workshop and we're gonna be going, uh, for an update on the SDS. And so we, with, uh, our neighbors in Clayton. And so Chip has been talking with them, so we'll go there, get it started. And Debbie, and to bring you people up to date as to what we're, what's gonna happen.
Why can't we stay, we're not, we're not adjourned anymore?
Yes, you, yes, you do.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, this is part, this is part of the open meeting as well.
Otherwise, we're. He's still in session.
Right. We're, we're just continuing this, what's going on, we gotta go into super to modify.
Yeah. And you're the mayor?
I am.
Yeah, I'm Chuck.
Gordon.
So again, y'all, this is George Dean, Mayor Clayton.
Hello.
Hey, look, George.
He's so young.
He's good.
George, we gotta see you right here.
Well, I think we'll give a quick overview of that. You think it'd be, I think we need to, the city need, y'all need to understand what this is all about.
Yep.
Um, stand up. Could you, okay. Um, I think we're all familiar with the battle between Clayton and Rayburn County. And we had an opportunity where Clayton invited Sky Valley, that Paul attended the meeting on our behalf as a counsel, and came back with a boatload of information. Cause I think we're all a, kinda holding back, we're, we're held back, we can't get grants. This has been for three years this has been going on. Sky Valley has been sitting on their hands and taking no trial, active role in this thing. And this means that we're in the same boat with Clayton. It's not a Clayton-Rayburn County issue, it's the cities within Rayburn County, it's our issue. And, uh, so anyway, they brought us in, kind of enlightened us. And in last week, Paul and Connie and myself attended the SDS conference down in Athens and learned a great deal about it. I don't know what your opinions were, but mine was that, uh, you know, I just looked at Clayton and Rayburn and going, okay, which one of you is acting like an idiot and why can't we solve this thing? Well, it's a lot deeper than that, and this is a statewide epidemic. So it has nothing to do with just Rayburn County and just Clayton. And this meeting that we went to was a six-hour class, um, was very informative. And so Paul and I've been working, Paul's been attending the meetings, and I've been educating, educated he is too. And, um, the idea is that we, you're being double taxed and the cities, you're, this, this, the county is getting taxes that the city needs to operate from. And in other words, we can take those taxes that we're giving to the county. And Raymond's gonna speak more on this, I guess, and clarify better, but, you know, we can take those taxes and increase the revenue without increasing your taxes overall. And, uh, that's a big thing. And we also get our grant money back. And, or what call it, city status, I believe it is. So, anyway, that gives you kind of an overview, so we're trying to work on that. Paul, you've got something, cause you've been knee-deep in this.
No, no, I think, uh, you summed it up well that it's, it is all the cities within Rayburn County that need to get a service delivery strategy worked out with the county. Uh, just because another city in the county has a disagreement with the, another city, that's fine on their particular issues, but there's, uh, there's, just, there's Georgia state law that mandates, that just needs to be put in place. And just the dollars and grant monies that we're unable to qualify for to do certain projects, like the part that we did last year, you know, that could've really helped with getting that project done. And so we're, um, Raymond is with SDS consultant. Uh, if you wanna stand up, introduce yourself real quick, and then, um, we're, we can go into the executive session here, right?
Well, we know, we, we may need to a little later, if we gotta discuss with what we want to do again, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I say one thing real quick?
Please.
Um, my name is George Graham, I'm the mayor of the city of Clayton. I'm glad that y'all had us today and that you welcomed us up here to Sky Valley. Um, like, they've kinda stated before, we have, the city of Clayton has had issues with Rayburn County. Um, and I know, you know, if you read the newspaper, listen to radio station, or just talk to people in general, it all, it gets played out as just a water and sewer issue, that this is just about water and sewer, um, that the city of Clayton's kinda, you know, just sitting on the pot and we're, we're not doing anything and we wanna be greedy. Um, and that's not, that's not at all about what this is. Um, yes, there's water and sewer that's involved in the issues. Um, the city of Clayton has its beliefs in, in what we're doing with that. Um, but it also goes into different things like roads and streets, um, that, you know, as they explain, you know, you pay a city tax, you pay a county tax. The county government runs a road department with that taxable money that they're getting off of you, but they typically provide no help, just as they do with the city of Clayton. Um, other issues with building inspections, marshals, offices, zoning, and ordinances, just, there's a lot of different variables that go into SDS than just water and sewer. So when we discuss some of this, I, I kinda wanna hope that you would open your mind to the fact that it's, it's more than just water and sewer. For three years, you've heard a lot of rhetoric about it being just water and sewer. It's just about water and sewer. The city of Clayton's just, you know, they're just being greedy. Uh, and that's not what it is. Um, we identified some things years ago, um, and have transitioned through, you know, new mayor and council, and have kinda opened up to the idea that, you know, we do need to do something about it. We need to correct this before we keep going forward into the future, you know, with bad agreements and bad deals that don't help protect the citizens that live in cities. And that's, that's kind of what our hope and goal is. So with that, um, this is Mr. Raymond Dickey, he's with SDS Consultants. Um, they are a firm that the city of Clayton has hired to help us do our SDS negotiations. Um, and Mr. Dickey, I'll give you the floor to speak. Thank you for your time.
Morning, everyone. Uh, I'm Raymond Dickey, I'm from down south. Love your beautiful city, beaut, this is a beautiful building. A lot of times when I speak concerning the SDS, which is service delivery strategy, it's, let, let me try and simplify it for everyone. The legislature passed certain laws not long ago when you, when, as, in, in time when you're dealing with cities and counties. So really, service delivery strategy is sorta like akin to an infant crawling at this point. It was a baby, because we're only in our, this time will be the third time that it has actually come up as required by law. It can come up in sooner if certain things occur. But basically, what service delivery does is, i- it takes a picture of what services the county provides, what services a city provides. And the ultimate purpose behind it is to cut down on competition between cities and between county and cities, because that translates into taxes that taxpayers have to pay in order to fund these services. In other words, you don't want a county running a water-sewer line and a city crossing it, going to this point, and a county going to this point. That, that makes no sense. It should be a defined area for that particular entity, whoever should serve it. But more importantly, there are certain constitutional requirements for cities and for counties. And it has to do with services that are provided by those cities and those counties. Basically, it says these services, a county can't come into a city and provide those services. A city, on the other hand, can't go into the county and provide those services. And when I say county, I mean unincorporated part of the county, okay? One way to actually look at this, the, the county government and the commissioners, there are commissioners here, correct? Okay. Commissioners, uh, they have like a dual role. One, they have to administer and govern all of the county-wide general services. And I'll explain that in just a moment, cause there are some services by law that the county actually provides countywide that cities aren't allowed to or do not provide, okay? For instance, one being the court system for state and superior court, okay? That's what we term a county-wide service. So when I say general services, that's the county-wide services. Everybody has to pay for those. However, services that cities provide for its residents and services that the county provides for the unincorporated area, those are two different services. The city should pay for their services that they provide, and the unincorporated areas should pay for their services that they provide to that unincorporated area. So you can sort of look at the services provided to the unincorporated as that being a city of its own. That part of the commissioner's job, be representing and providing those services, is sorta like they're here providing county-wide services, but over here, they're really providing those services to the unincorporated area, which is on the same footing as a city. So some people look at it as like an implied city where they fund those services and provide those services. In any event, what we do, we, we come in and help cities. We do not represent counties at all. We've never represented a county, do not intend to. I am city attorney for various cities in South Georgia. Uh, so, uh, my heart lives with, with helping cities, not counties. In any event, we, we come in and we, we look at the county services that they provide and how they fund it, and what they're charging and how they're charging it and what funds they're charging, charging it from. And the law actually restricts what they can actually use as far as funding for those unincorporated services. And what you usually find is that a county provides a service to an unincorporated area, okay? And not to the city, but they take the money from the general fund of the county, which means that they're taking it from all of the cities to fund the unincorporated part of the county. Now, that was an important part, if you, if you haven't followed me so far. And what happens in that regard is that, yeah, the unincorporated area is paying for that, but you're paying for a service that you're not getting in the cities. And that's, that's unfair, that's an equity issue, and it's a legal issue. And so what happens with that is that there is, there has been a mindset for as long as county governments have been in existence. And that mindset is, we're not doing anything wrong, but this is fine. That's because they've always been allowed to do it. No one has actually ever come in and challenged them on those issues. And that's going, our analysis of this county, that's going on currently in this county. They are charging the city's funds from the general fund to pay services in the unincorporated area. Uh, and I'll give you, uh, th- this is a real simple one. Uh, a city has its own ordinances. You, the city governs itself and creates laws, which we call ordinances, that governs only the city, okay? Well, it's up to the city to enforce those ordinances. The county, when it creates an ordinance, it only covers the unincorporated part of the county. It's up to itself to enforce those. If they pass on ordinances, it doesn't affect city residents. It's only the unincorporated part of the county. But they have a marshal i- in their budget that's fairly high. I haven't really ever seen one that costs that much in, in another county so far. But they're charging it, and, and his duty is to enforce the ordinances in the unincorporated part of the county. But you're paying for him through your tax dollars that you're paying properly, because they're getting the money from the general fund. Want to add injury to insult, when he goes and charges a violation on the ordinance, they go to court, and if they pay a fine, they're, it, it's going back to them again. So, and it's, and, and that's just one. There are multiple, multiple services. A lot of people didn't realize how vast and different the actual services are when they break them down, but some of them can be very expensive. I, I think Wesley Corbett is my partner in service delivery strategy. And that's a company that we put together to try to go help cities. And Wesley, uh, for multiple years, did audits for cities and counties for government. And Wesley, for multiple years, did audits for cities and counties, for governments, to determine, an audit has to be done every year on it for a county and for a city and for authorities. And the purpose behind that is to make sure that they're complying with the law, that they're not breaking the law, okay? So Wesley comes in and audits what has been done by the county. And so that no one can question what's going on, we actually use the county's audit, what they presented, what they voted on, and approved. So we're not, we're not using figures and numbers that we're pulling out of the air. We're basing it strictly off of what they did and what they presented through their audit and their budget. So I think one of the issues, well, Sky Valley, Wesley indicated to me that you have your own fire contract or fire service.
That's right.
And you pay for that, okay? The problem with that is that's one of those constitutional supplemental powers that I talked about earlier. A city can provide its own fire protection. A county can provide its fire protection in the unincorporated area, all right? But what's apparently happening is that you're providing, whether you have your fire department or it's through a contract, you're providing your own fire department for coverage in your city. And you're paying for that. Well, guess what? You're also paying for the unincorporated part or the rest of the county. And now Clayton, you, Clayton is in the county's fire district, okay? I'll explain that in just a moment. But you're paying for all of that, and you're not, you're not getting that primary service. So that you can understand how it works, on service delivery, you have to fill out these forms, and you have to submit them to DCA, Department of Community Affairs. And it lists, one, what the service is, two, who will provide it, how they will provide it, and then three, how it will be funded. And it has to be signed off by certain parties, certain cities and the county. In any event, what happens with that is you, if you have a defined area, you attach a map. Clayton made a decision long ago to turn a fire department over to the county. So there's an intergovernmental agreement that allows the county to come into the city and provide that service. Absent these type of agreements, the county can't come into the city and provide it. Well, you're providing your own fire department, and you're being taxed for everybody else's primary fire service. So that's one of the, these are the things that you look at. And when service delivery is negotiated, you just sort of have to put your foot down and say, this is our city. You don't, you don't have an entitlement to come in and serve our city because we have already made arrangements to provide that service to our citizens. And therefore, you, you can't tax us for it. So a special service district is created on these maps. And I'm just going to give you an example. If Sky Valley was the only one that provided their own fire department in the whole county, then the fire service map that is attached to these sheets, they have to be filed with the state, would show Sky Valley with its own fire district and show the county representing everything else. And then that sheet would say, the service is fire. The county will be providing the service countywide except for Sky Valley, even to the other cities, and it'll name the cities, through an intergovernmental agreement. And the funding will be taxes only from that special service district. So that means they can't tax Sky Valley. Now, that's really how those things should be set up. The current service delivery sheets are, in my opinion, a mess because basically, it allows the county to provide services and get all of the money from the general fund. General fund being everybody's tax dollars, okay? Now, I know, I don't want to get too deep and too complicated, but the, the law restricts what the county can use as far as funding for a special service district. Let me go back to fire. So that means that they can only use from that special service district taxes that they charge for that. So if I'm, if I'm in Sky Valley living and someone else is living in the county, and the county taxes for it, when you get your tax bill, your millage may be, and these are just examples, let's say your millage is eight mils for countywide services. However, the bill for, the tax bill for the person living in the unincorporated area would show that it's eight mils also because remember, they can only fund the general countywide services that they provide, okay? So they can tax everybody for those. But the person living in the unincorporated area would have an additional line on their tax bill that would say, special service district fire, you know, one mil or two mils, whatever it is. So they would actually have a higher millage rate than you would have in the city. And that's the way there's, that's the way it is sort of set up throughout all of these services.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. What concerns me is two things. The sheriff's department is basically covering the county. When we have had incidents of potential break-ins, we get excellent backup to our police department from the sheriff's department. And the sheriff has been very generous in that backup. I'm concerned that we have at night one policeman on. If he has to deal with something, he calls for backup. In no way would I want to damage that relationship. That's the first thing, if I may. Second thing is the EMTs come in from the county. And we, we need that resource and protection. And in no way would I want to damage that. I can tell you that Tranca Stansel, who is the captain, does a superb job of training, supervision, and when we pick up the phone for 911, we get them ASAP. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Valid points. As far as the sheriff is concerned, the sheriff, and this is actually already been to the Supreme Court of Georgia, the sheriff is a constitutional officer. His position is created by the Constitution of the state of Georgia. And it has been determined long ago that the sheriff is not subject to service delivery. His job is to provide police protection and other services countywide, no matter if you have a police department or not. So he is not included in service delivery. He is actually excluded from service delivery. Okay? Now, on the service, the current service delivery sheet, and under the constitutional supplemental powers for cities and for counties, it does say that cities can provide their own EMS service, okay? But if they don't have an EMS service, and the county has it, then the SDS sheets say that the county can provide that EMS service countywide. And that's the way it is currently set up. But, but once again, the sheriff and EMS are put into that category as general countywide services that everybody gets taxed for because everybody gets the service, okay? One that is going to be hard fought everywhere you go is roads, okay? Because you are charged as a city with taking care of your own roads and providing the funding for taking care of your roads, all right? So the county in the unincorporated areas, they have the same duty. They have to take care of their roads, and they're charged with providing funding with taking care of their roads, okay? However, currently, the way it is set up in your service delivery documents, the county takes care of the unincorporated areas' roads. You, the city, takes care of its roads, and you pay for it from your taxes that you're taxed. But the county taxes everybody in the county for the unincorporated roads. So you're paying for roads in a subdivision at the other end of the county. But, 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 but the county doesn't fund any money. I, I haven't, I better not say that, but I'll ask that question. Does the county give you any money to provide maintenance or paving for your roads?
Yes.
They give them a little gravel to put down on the snow.
And cut to.
And they came in and did some shoulder work.
Okay. All right. Still, that should be under an intergovernmental agreement as to what they will do. And you would have to pay for whatever services that they do because the road budget is, is extreme. It's one of the highest ones in the, in the county's audit. So, you know, it would, it would end up being cheaper for you just to pay for whatever you needed from them under an agreement and let them tax the unincorporated area versus the incorporated area.
May I ask another question?
She had a question first. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious. I know within the county, there are about seven incorporated cities, six or seven. What percent of the population of Raven County lives in unincorporated areas?
I believe, you're asking questions or a Western question. Because he, he gives all of that information, and, but we do go over. But the majority of the population is in the county, okay? But the population and service delivery really isn't the issue. When you look at service delivery, you look at digest values, what the values are in the cities and the counties, and what percentage the cities represent as far as the county. Because when they, when they tax you on your property taxes, they're going to tax the property offices, who they want to tax, okay? And so that's, that's kind of how you look at service delivery. Now, population comes into other areas of law like laws, local option sales tax, and SLO, special purpose option, sales tax. But for service delivery, you look at what the digest values are for the cities and the county. And although the counties are still higher, the, the cities have, you know, a good portion of the digest values, so. Yes, ma'am?
The other area is that we pay for the schools.
Schools have nothing to do with it.
Schools are not in the system. Okay, thank you.
The city, now, let me, let me back up and make sure. We do not have a city school system in this county. I have not found one, and it hasn't been represented to me. So schools will not be involved.
Then there is an issue though, that, that surfaces. All the counties around us have an exclusion for people over 65 paying the school tax. This county, we pay the school tax. However, I have had the occasion to talk to one of the board members and was very impressed, even though we have very few children, we do have some, but very few that go to school in the county. They are doing an exceptional job with, with their programs and services. It's expensive, but it's, it's well done, and the kids are getting, and I think, an exceptional education. I'm asking the question because in no way would I want to damage that.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with.
Okay, thanks for that answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to fire, I know we've had a few fires here, and not only does this daily respond, you're wonderful, but don't other fire?
Fire.
All, don't they all respond? So service delivery from the county?
But that's through what's known as a mutual aid agreement.
Okay.
There's state, there's state requirements for all fire departments to enter into mutual aid agreements. You may have some large structure that requires mutual aid from 50 or 100 miles away. For instance, when the sugar refinery blew up in Port Woodless, Georgia, they had fire departments coming from 100 miles away because they needed, it was such a massive explosion and fire at that facility, that they needed more support than any of the cities or counties had. They had to go out, out, you know, outside the counties to other counties and cities. So really, that's not part of that issue. That's, that's a fire service issue. So moving on to what the mayor indicated as far as what has happened, from what we have found, it's been about three years now, almost three years, I believe, that you have long, that the cities in the county has been without its official government status. Because if you do not update the service delivery when certain things occur, in, in our business, we call them triggers. They trigger a legal requirement to have to renegotiate service delivery. And if no triggers occur, you got to do it every 10 years, okay? But there are always triggers that occur within that 10-year period. And what has happened is you've had, this county, those triggers have long since occurred, even the, the one with the 10-year issue. And there's been no resolution of service delivery. And therefore, you can't get government funding for projects. If you wanted to go take a loan to do something, you can't do that. You can't get grants. There are, there are a lot of problems with losing that official status. And the, these documents that I talked about, these service delivery sheets, when they're compiled and they're signed off, whether it's done as an agreement or whether you have to go to court, and the judge makes a determination and signs an order, that's filed with the state of Georgia, and then that will in turn get you back to having your government status, all right? So that you, you can, you can, you can get out from underneath those penalties that exist right now. It's interesting that it's been three years. The statute really requires, it says the county should, should notify everybody and move forward with it. But in service delivery, you can have cities with issues with the county. You can have cities with issues against each other. So all of that stuff has got to be worked out, and it, it hasn't been. So back to what I, I guess is some issue with it, there's some implication that it's Clayton versus the county, or the county versus Clayton over a few issues. That's not really the case. Because if, if I'm sitting in one of these positions, and I know, and I learned that my city and my taxpayers and my constituents are being taxed for things that... are being taxed for things that they shouldn't be taxed for, then I, I think I would be in a position to try and do something about that. And I think that's what, what Sky Valley is, is wanting to do when it comes to sitting at the table trying to get this information and these things correct. Yes, ma'am?
Are you implying that Sky Valley could become, could regain our qualified governmental status if we negotiated directly with the county instead of waiting for the Clayton litigation to process?
Good question. No, ma'am, that cannot happen. It's, it's gotta be certain cities and counties, uh, that are involved. However, everybody gets a seat at the table. Okay? So, it, it, it has to be basically everyone. Alright? And the ultimate resolution on that is if they can't agree, then a judge has got to listen, make a decision on. But there are certain steps that you have to go through before you can get to that point. Okay? I, I hope that answers your question. Yes, sir.
From an educational standpoint, how many other states in the US have this particular law? I'd put it to probably twelve, and I've never heard of this before.
Uh, once again, others, other states do have it. But in the grand scheme of time for governments, it's, it's fairly new. Okay? It, this was, this law in Georgia was created back in eighty-nine, eighty-eight, somewhere in that range. And so, when I said that we're only in our third, you got eighty-nine to ninety. That was, and then two thousand and ten, we did it again. And so, we're, we're coming up. Some places went ahead once the law was created and they signed and got their service delivery put in place. What I triggered that, that ten-year period when they did it. So, s- some cities and counties, it doesn't happen, uh, in conjunction with the census. Other ones decided, we'll just leave it and have it in conjunction with the census. So, we're, we're, in, in this county, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. But the problem of that is you have to do it no matter what. So, and if you don't do it, you get penalized. And that's, that's what's occurring at this point with, with, with this county and cities. Yes, sir?
Do you work for the city of Clayton?
We are, we were, we have been contracted by the city of Clayton to help them in this matter. Okay? So, we, we are representing along with their legal counsel also the city of Clayton.
Are you charging them for your attendance at this meeting?
Yes, sir, we will be charging them for attendance.
A gift to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
How long do you think it takes for us to be able to get a contact? Just a really good vote?
Sometimes it takes weeks. If there are highly contested points, it can take as long as a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days. But the laws governing when that starts and, and is, has to be completed are actually in the law. It's not something that drags out. So, once you, once that trigger occurs and you start the requirements for negotiation, it requires mediation. If that can't be resolved, then the judge has to schedule a hearing and hear the matter and it has to be concluded within a certain time period.
Which is a hundred and twenty days, you say?
One eighty if it goes to a hearing with the judge.
Or three years.
Well, three years, we have, that's where I'm coming from.
If you don't, if you, if you do not follow the, the law.
Right.
Okay? Then you are, at, at the point in time when you're, when the time runs out, you get penalized until you do comply with the law.
So, we need to go through that process before we even can be considered for the grants that we would like to have, correct?
Basically, the minute the judge signs an order or an agreement is reached and the sheets are given to DCA, you, you will obtain your government status back, your qualified government status.
What is DCA?
Department of Community Affairs. It's the Department of the state of Georgia. Uh, they administer a lot of different things.
I think, can I interject real quick, just to answer your question a little bit better? Um, the three years that's gone by and kinda what Raymond was talking about before when it's trying to explain that Sky Valley gets a seat at the table, but Sky Valley's not a qualified government to sign off on the SDS. There's only three entities in the county. The county government, the city of Clayton, and the city of Mountain City are the only people that are required to sign off on any of this.
Why?
Um, it's due to state law as far as population size and whether you're the county's seat or not. So, Sky Valley isn't big enough to actually be required to sign off on the SDS. But one of the reasons we're up here is, is because, like we said before, we're concerned about what the other cities are getting or not getting. Um, and that's why we, you know, are kinda up here and wanna inform you of everything that's going on. But the three years that's gone by, any one of these three qualified entities could've caused this trigger to go off. So, the county government, two years ago, could've very well said, you know, we don't wanna keep going, we wanna, you know, cause this trigger to go off and go mediation. Um, the city of Clayton had intentions to do that. Um, however, we were given a lawsuit over water and sewer issues. Instead of being able to focus on SDS, the county government, the Water and Sewer Authority, decided to go a different route and kinda get everybody sidetracked after that. So, you know, that, the means to the end of this is, is that, you know, if the city of Clayton has to do what the city of Clayton has to do, that hopefully by the end of a hundred and eighty days, everyone will have an answer.
On SDS?
On SDS, and that's, that's what we're here for. We intend to have meaningful negotiations. Um, and that's what we have Mr. Dickey here for, and that's what we have Wesley Corvett for. Um, but that, that's the city of Clayton's intent is, is that we don't wanna keep going for three more years, or three more years, or three more years.
And, and really, that's the biggest point. Because when you look at one year, it might not be that impressive. But when you look at ten years, if you, if you're putting something in place that's gonna last for ten years and they're taxing you for things that you're not getting for ten years or more. Uh, that, that becomes, when, when you look at the overall money over that time period, then it really becomes significant. So, these are things that you, that you need to get set in place and, and, and whether or not an agreement can be reached on it. I'm always optimistic about it. But, uh, something needs to be done because everybody has lost their qualified government status. So, it's that, that, that hat, I mean, it, it can no longer wait. We, we have to do something about it. And that's where Clayton is at, and that's, that's their position.
I'd like to say something, yeah, real quick. I just wanna thank the city of Clayton. You know, we found out only hours before the meeting. And fortunately, Paul could attend this meeting and came back and says, hey, you know, we need to pay attention to this thing. Yes, this deal between Clayton and Raven County is one thing. But it didn't take us long to figure out that, you know, we're not in the same, we don't have the same issues that Clayton does. And so, if we, you know, if we just sat back and allowed, and waited on Clayton and Raven County, then Sky Valley would be missing out on funding that it needs. And, um, you know, and because we have different issues, they, they contract for fire, they contract for garbage. We pay for garbage, we pay for fire. And so, we're getting double taxed on that. We can take that tax from the, the county and apply it to the city and the city's gonna be better off and the net tax ratio to the taxpayer is zero.
We get a chance.
How do we get into the negotiation? Alright, hold on, and that's fine, and he can clarify this, but we get a second seat.
I, I, that, I think that's in a lot of people's mind. Jordan says we don't have to be part of signing off. That's true, but we, we do have a seat at the table. We're awarded by law to negotiate. So, what we're trying to do here is be proactive and get on top of the ball and work for you guys on getting what we deserve.
And support Clayton.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's right.
Would it be as simple as developing special service agreements with the county for us to provide our own fire protection and so on and so forth? Exactly. So, we will never get classified in with the same category that the city of Clayton is.
You could.
In regards to, you know, public opinion elsewhere in Raven County.
It, it, there are certain factors under the statute that, that the mayor mentioned. In order to be an affected city that is required to sign off, you have to have at least a population under the census of five hundred people. And currently, you're below that too. Okay? And, uh, the, the county seat always is an affected party. The county is always an affected party. And so, that's how the mayor indicated to you that it was the county, Clayton, and Mountain City.
I'd like to ask the question of the special service districts.
Yes, sir.
How are they set up? Is each individual service?
Each individual service.
District of a map?
Yes, sir.
And then they have to pay, on, they are the ones that pay for certain items within the services?
Correct.
So, is, is that defined in the whole county that we have maps of?
Uh, you have a service delivery strategy that the current service delivery strategy does not have a sheet for all the services that are out there. Some services that are being provided are not even listed on the service delivery sheets. Some services that are listed on the sheets do have maps, some don't. So, it becomes, it, it, once again, I, I'm not, don't, I'm not trying to say that anybody didn't understand or didn't do what they thought was right when these were done. But when, when you compare them to what they should be, they're, they're not in very good shape, okay?
They're not defined very well.
No, sir, they're not.
I'll, I'll kinda restate that, we don't believe that there's any willful neglect that's happened. Um, but just throughout the years and with, you know, various understandings of how things work, people kinda just got it done. Um, and that's why we're at the point in time where we wanna really clarify what is what and who's gonna do what and how it's gonna be paid for.
And just so that you understand what, what your, your, the councilman was indicating about your seat at the table, although you're not one of the affected parties that have to sign off on it, the state law clearly states that they cannot use money to fund those unincorporated services, period. Whether you're at the table or not, they can't go there and sign something that says, well, since Sky Valley, since Sky Valley, they don't matter, cause they can't sign off on it, we're just gonna tax them illegally. They can't do that. That's the reason why you need to be at the table to say, whoa, wait a minute, you can't do that. Whether I'm here or not, you can't, Clayton, Mountain City, and county, you can't enter into that type of agreement. Okay? So, it, it becomes, that's the reason why everybody has a seat at the table. And it becomes important to hear what they have to say and to get their services put on the sheets in the proper form. Yes, ma'am?
In very simplified terms, if city of Sky Valley quit paying Raven County taxes and we pay to the city, will we get our qualified city's debt back?
You can't quit paying taxes. Pay it all.
I was hoping they will take your property. They'll take your money, thank you very much.
Take your property. Yes, ma'am.
That gets to the, the real question. It has been well more than a hundred and eighty days and mediation has been tried and failed. Much longer before they're able to.
Mediation has not been.
How much longer is the lawsuit gonna drag out? How much longer before there is an agreement and we have any clue?
Once, once the lawsuit is filed, you have to go through mediation. I'm not saying the lawsuit will be filed. They, it, it may be that an agreement can be reached. But once the lawsuit's filed, it, it's over with in that hundred and eighty-day period.
But that's a different lawsuit than the one that they.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's different from what the, the mayor indicated. They, they.
There is no lawsuit currently. Let me, let me clarify. Right now, there is no lawsuit anywhere.
So, let's get going.
Yeah.
Let, let's, let's resolve this. What's the holdup now?
Cause we're, we're trying, we're trying to, we're trying to negotiate fairly, you know. We, we, we wanna, you gotta, wanna give the county a chance. We're just run over there and file a petition, take them to court. We're trying to sit down and negotiate with them first.
We, we do have a meeting tonight at four o'clock.
We have a meeting this afternoon. What we're trying to do here is work with the city of Clayton and their consultants and give them the same sheet of music basically for these negotiations.
But this is a, this is a good reason for people in Sky Valley to get out and vote on the twenty-fourth of May. Because even though we may not have the kind of opportunity, we vote the county commissioners. And I think we need to recognize that two hundred people should get out and vote on May twenty-fourth.
That's always an issue because you do have a county commissioner or multiple that represents your, your suit. And you probably need to be, if you understand what we're talking about, you probably need to be in their ear saying, look, uh, this needs to be, this needs to change. So, uh, but once again, they have, they have a dual, I, I'm calling it a dual role. They're representing the entire county, their district. And they're also representing that unincorporated part. And there are countywide services that they provide that they, they can get funding for from everyone. But then there are services that they only provide to the unincorporated areas. Another one is like planning and zoning. I don't know how, how it's structured, if you have your own.
Oh, boy.
Alright, well, you do your own planning and zoning here, which is the law, the constitutional supplemental powers gives you the right to do that. And the county can't come in and do that. They can't pass laws, the county can't pass an ordinance saying that the, the house across the street is industrial, okay? That's done in, in your city, you handle that. The county handles the unincorporated part. But they're charging the general fund for all of the cost of planning and zoning. And so, you're, you're paying for your planning and zoning. That's what your mayor was indicating, you're getting double taxed. You're, you're providing funding for your planning and zoning and you're providing funding for the county's unincorporated planning and zoning. So. It, it, it's, it's, in, in my mind, it's crazy. When you, we, but, but it's not uncommon, let, let me say this much. This is not uncommon because when you look, all the other counties that we, and cities that we've looked at and represented, they, they have the same issues. Because this is really, in the last less than ten years, this has really become a hot issue because people are slowly understanding what's going on and what the intent of these laws that were passed by the legislature were put in place to protect cities and, you know, against these things. Otherwise, if you didn't have these laws, the county could just charge anything they wanted to anybody and provide whatever they so desire. And then you would still have to provide your services and pay for them. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I, I'm thinking it would be true for us to say, if we had straightened out the SDS years ago, we would've never had a lawsuit with water and sewer in the county.
we would have never had a lawsuit with water and sewer in the county. We would have had all the areas straightened out. They would have never come to us and said, give us your water and sewer, we're not gonna give you any applause, and this last one, none of that would have ever happened, am I right? I think we would.
I'd say that's an accurate statement. And that's what we've, you know, been talking about with maps and everything else. Because when the first SDS agreements were done, like, and then when they went to be back to be revised, whoever did them kinda just signed off on it again. And things kinda just got left open-ended. And so, open-ended that it has caused problems for the city of Clayton. Um, you know, if we were to have the detailed maps, even though, you know, we own a lot of infrastructure, that map is what, you know, can be an issue. Or how people write things up is an issue. So, that's what we want to get clarified is.
Nobody realized how important those were, I think. They were changed and mayors just signed off.
Hey, Randy, can you put in perspective how much money the city taxpayers will be saving with the rollback of the mill rate?
Well, um.
I mean, you don't have to put the.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna state.
But it is millions in general.
Well, let me just say this much. You provide water and sewer to your citizens?
Water.
So, the. Sewer will be, at some point now, that's one of the things on the table here.
Okay. Well, for instance, just, just for 2016, the county took money from the general fund and paid to the water sewer. That amount was one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So, that's your money paying for water and sewer. I don't have the breakdowns, we have it, but I don't have it in front of me. And you're paying for your own sewer.
Water.
Water.
Okay, so water, so you're providing water. So, you're paying for your own water, but you're also paying for the county's, the rest of the county's water.
Two thousand and eighteen is almost another million.
So, now.
But this is, you paid for a lawsuit against the city of Clayton that you had no beef in.
Yeah. And this is just 2016, their audit. Once again, we only look at their audits because there can be no contesting it. Because that's their auditors, they brought it before the commissioners, the commissioners approved it, okay? I'm not sitting here quoting numbers out of the air. But this is only 2016. If we went back ten years or more, how much, how much money or less? But you said that it was 2018?
Yeah, it's online if anybody wants to look.
And that's in their budget, right?
In their budget for this year, yes.
Their budget.
And plus, they also transfer more that you don't see because you have season card dollars.
In any event, there, there, there could, there possibly be, could be a rollback. Sky Valley and Tullula Falls both have fire, they provide their own fire protection. It could be as much, if, it could fluctuate from point one-nine to a point three-eight on the millers just for fire, okay? Now, when you translate that into dollars, it, you know, it could be substantial. But just for one year, if the unincorporated services for, for Clayton, Sky Valley, Tullula Falls, and the other cities, for 2016, it would range between three sixty to four twenty in dollars that the county has taken from the residents. Not just Sky Valley, all of them. But when you look at each year that occurs, you quickly see how that adds up. So, and, you know, really, that's tax money that the city.
Needs.
Could use, or it could be used to rollback millage or however y'all decide to do it. But in any of them, uh, I take a lot of questions from over here.
I answered my own in my own head, thank you.
Okay.
If anybody wanna step on for a minute and talk to him and Clayton. In exactly the same.
I didn't hear that happening here, I think.
We should hear that.
What can we do right now?
I'd hear you.
Okay. If y'all are in agreement, then I'll attend the SDS meeting this afternoon with Raymond and discuss on behalf of Sky Valley.
I'll get down with you.
All right. Will you agree, just let him speak?
I don't think I'm big enough to hold you back.
Do you wanna mention the insurance premiums or?
I'm not going, I don't wanna.
No, I'm, you're not going. These are just making sure we don't have too many kids.
All the cities get a kickback.
If you're not talking about going into the exact.
Here, would you stand up and say that?
I think we can all go. So, basically, if we can get into an agreement with Clayton and Tullula Falls, we've got the seat at the table and the cost, I'm gonna use these words a lot, the cost to benefit is tremendous, is that correct? Or potentially tremendous, let's use that word. Yes, sir. Especially if this is never revisited for another ten years. That's the point I was trying to base, is that we stand to come out of this in a really good spot compared to where we've been.
There's been a lot financially, uh, how, what is our sharing cost?
That's one of the things that's gotta be addressed. And that's gotta be addressed with Clayton and Tullula Falls and with SDS.
Okay, but Sky Valley would just be a joining factor.
Is it a group that you're representing? Yes, sir, but we would need to speak with Clayton. Right, we need, that's gotta be worked out as far as the particulars. As far as what Clayton wants, what we want, and what we want, and how it's gonna be put together as a package.
And I'm thinking financially, we are only two hundred people. So, therefore, our portion would be much less.
But that's, again, that's what needs to be addressed.
Just a quick question, you're mentioning Tullula, Clayton, and Sky Valley. Are the other municipalities in the county joining in on this?
Mountain City.
Who else have you talked to?
Let me address that. We had a meeting, the mayors, I invited all the mayors down a couple of weeks ago, and that's what the meeting, Paul came to, and Mr. Corbett was up here. And we kinda laid all this out for all the mayors of the cities in the county and informed them of what our intentions were, of the fact that we'd hired a consulting group and had kinda offered, you know, a pathway of, you know, you can join us if you'd like to, you don't have to join us, you know, the city of Clayton's not telling anyone what to do. And still to this day, I'm not up here to tell you that you have to do anything. All I'm here to do is to tell you that the city of Clayton is trying to look after the best interest of all the cities. We would appreciate support, but the offer was given that if any individual city wanted to join and, you know, kinda go along with what we're doing with having a consultant assist with doing the SDS negotiations, then we were more than willing, you know, to let you come aboard, you know, and go down that road. So, don't feel like the city of Clayton is telling anyone that you have to do anything.
Don't get me wrong, the reason for my question was, there's strength in numbers.
There is.
We're gonna have a lot more negotiating power against the county if all of the municipalities get involved.
And that's something we're working on, and, you know, the hand has been extended to all the municipalities. All the municipalities that have met Wesley, that haven't met Raymond, but they, you know, has been laid out to all the, to all the other municipalities what the city of Clayton is doing, you know, what our position is and where we would like to go going forward. So, yes, yes, Rob, I agree with your statement, and that's something that we are working on.
Some of them are afraid. Some of the mayors have been here a long time and afraid. The response is very negative.
There's only three cities in Clayton and Raven County that charge property taxes, the others don't.
Whoa, 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 tell everybody.
Yeah, let's have a one.
Go ahead. I just wanna say there's a distinguished difference that I wanted to address to Danny. He brought up the idea about the other cities, and I think Clayton would love to have him join, and I think we all would too. But the thing about it is, there are only three taxing cities in Raven County, and that's Tullula, Sky Valley, and Clayton, am I correct?
I don't know that Tullula Falls has.
Oh, they don't tax, so, in other words, those cities will benefit by getting their city status back and availability of getting grants. But they won't increase the revenue of their cities through taxes at the city because they use all of the county services. They don't have any county cities.
That's not necessarily true, though, because even Tiger, for instance.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they have to do their own soft spreading or contract to have street work done or different things like that. So, whether they have a taxable millage or not, they would benefit as well from going through an SDS process that attempts to have the county to address the fact that they are taxing those citizens but not providing the service and either, you know, get them to provide the service or get them to give them the money back in the form of a miller drawback.
I got you.
Or, you know, a check to the city for them to provide that service.
Right.
But yes, you're correct. Sky Valley is the most uniquely sistered as far as the issues go with the city of Clayton because of the fact that you do have a property tax base that you run their government on, along with franchise fees and insurance premium rebates and permit fees and all that.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, sir. Sir, yes, me. Do you have, uh, in mind a timeframe expectation as to whether or not these other cities in the county may decide to join this?
I do not. Like I said, about two weeks ago, we all met, and that was the first extension of, you know, would you like to join us? I think your board up here kinda gained some steam and the idea that something needs to be done by attending a class that GMA puts on that addresses SDS. And I believe that some of the other cities were supposed to go, and I don't know that they went. The biggest thing with all of this is, is this is an educational issue. A lot of people are not educated on what SDS is and how it affects all the cities and the counties, and that is a hard process to do. And, you know, hopefully after today's meeting and going forward, some of the other cities will realize that, you know, they kinda need to get on the ball with it as far as having some type of representation or at least trying to fight for the rights that they deserve because of being taxed on their property value base but not being provided service.
But you said you've gone to other city meetings like this, whether it's a workshop or not. You've gone.
I haven't been, I haven't been to any, this is the first city council meeting I've been to, or workshop for another city that I've been to. But we had, like, we had all the other mayors come to Clayton City Hall and met with all them and laid everything out and invited them to the process.
But I hope that you have an opportunity because I am incredibly impressed with you and you and what y'all got to say and the prospects of how our city can benefit from this.
Yes, sir.
And I would encourage you to do everything you can to get those other folks on board.
Well, if they don't come on board, they don't stop this movement here, though. So, they don't, if they don't come on board, they're gonna end up with it anyway.
And now, you know, it's, they may not have been there, they may not have been asked. You asked if he'd gone around all the meetings and done this?
I have not been asked at any other council meetings.
That's why I'm curious as to what kind of timeframe you were looking at to get this thing done and move it.
It's already, it's already, it's going on right now in minutes.
The wheels are turning, and if people wish to join.
Try to catch up. We have one to talk to you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming. See you next week.